All right, let me call the meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board together. It is the meeting on April 22nd, Earth Day. We just finished a pre-meeting and we're going to start this meeting with a spotlight. Lisa? And if you just would introduce yourself to the audience at home and all of us here as well, and then we look forward to hearing you from you.
Is this where you would like us? Thank you.
Yes, that is, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for inviting our Quiz Bowl Team A to tonight's school board meeting for Spotlight. This is the first year that our middle school has had a Quiz Bowl team. We had enough students sign up for four teams, but these three gentlemen and one young lady who's not here actually qualified for Nationals, our very first year of Quiz Bowl. So, we're going to compete in Chicago over Mother's Day weekend, so we've put a little pressure on about bringing a trophy home for the moms. Quiz Bowl is two teams going head-to-head in a competition, all areas of knowledge. It can be about history, literature, science, fine arts, current events, pop culture, sports, and more. So, the very first tournament we went to this year, the first round, we played a very experienced team. Do you remember this? There was dough in the headlight looks and jaw drops. And I thought, okay, how are we going to do this? They were in awe and actually admired that team and congratulated them, and I kind of think we're at that level now. But they were really tough, but they stayed persistent. Always handshakes and saying congratulations or good job at the end, so that's a big part of Quiz Bowl as well. It's not just the knowledge, but it was truly the sportsmanship. So, it is an honor for me to introduce these students one-on-one. They are a powerhouse team. I'm going to introduce Finn first. Come on over here. Finn is our captain. And what happens in Quiz Bowl, you, first person that goes up for, wins the toss-up question will then get the opportunity for three bonus questions for the team, and that's when the team needs to have five seconds and the captain has to answer. And I've taught these students since sixth grade, and this year Finn has come out with his leadership skills and confidence, and he has been an amazing captain for us. One of his strengths, they get math questions and scratch paper, he doesn't use the scratch paper. It's all up here and he gets it and it's first, and the other teams are dropping their jaws at us at that point, so it's really exciting. So, thank you Finn for that. And then I want to introduce Axel. This is Axel Abrahamsen, also eighth grade. Axel brings in sports, pop culture, history, really a jack-of-all-trades. He has been a wonderful addition to our team as well. And last but not least, Ryan Doucere. His positive energy and smile keeps us upbeat and excited about this. He also knows a lot about current events, geography, history, these groups, and we're missing Rose Hughes tonight, who is our Broadway plays, literature, fine arts culture. And they acknowledge each other's strengths as we put together this team. So, I'm really grateful that I've had this experience to share with them. I know that they're going to continue to impact our world in a way with not only their knowledge, but their kindness. And again, I just want to say congratulations and thank you for letting them come see you tonight. Parents, would you like to be in the photo with us?
We're not in the photo, but acknowledge you.
Oh! Well, you know what? The reason I wanted to say that, and I forgot to, is the parents, including Ms. Casey, has been assistant coaches, because I have four teams going, and I forgot to thank them also. It's Saturday tournaments, and yes, they have definitely helped pitch in and be a part of that. So, parents, I guess you can take pictures, but you can't be with us. Oh, you want to go on this side?
Since Ms. Lily, before you guys go, since Ms. Lily pointed me out, I just want to say, I have gotten the chance to see the Quiz Bowl teams in action, and this team in particular. And I do, I know you said that the sportsmanship is sort of part of Quiz Bowl in general, but it, even more so, this team and our St. Louis Park team has impressed me again and again with how graciously they play the game, whether they're way ahead or way behind, and all over the place, because all of the teams have been both, in both of those positions, and they've been super gracious and amazing sportsmanship throughout. So, I've been really proud of our kids in our community throughout the whole season in Quiz Bowl, so thanks, everything.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. So, now we're going to get on to approving the agenda. We have first on the agenda, open forum, followed by the superintendent's report. We have several discussion items. One is self-insurance, employee health benefits plan. Two, construction update, a bid award. C is the wellness update. D is the fiscal 2020 capital-related budgets. And then we have E, policy development, first reading of policies, 799 post issuance debt compliance policy, stay for that. And 820, closing of a school building, and that's just a standard review. And then F is policy development, second reading, policies, 801 equal access to school facilities, and 810 naming of facilities, followed by the consent agenda and the action agenda. We have three items on the action agenda, self-insurance, employee health benefits plan, fiscal year 2020 capital-related budgets, and policy development, our second reading, which is policies, 801 equal access to school facilities, and 810 naming of facilities. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So much.
Thank you, Mary. Moved by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, 7-0. So, first up, we have open forum, and I have very well organized, I have several slips and they're in order, I've been told, so we'll just go with them as we have them, and I hope that information is right. I trust that it is. So, first up, we have Nathan Tangen, and I know he was ready when I walked in the door. And if you just could state your name, and if it matters, your position, and if it doesn't, you don't have to, and then your address?
Absolutely.
And then we'll go from there. Unless you're a student speaking, in which case you don't need to give us your address.
I'm Nathan Tangen. I work in the district as a digital learning coordinator, and I also represent the Park Association of Teachers as their president. I live at 15140 Lloyd's Lane in Minnetoka, Minnesota. Superintendent Ossai, Board Chair Gores, board members and district leaders, I'm here tonight with two items. My first item is a sincere thank you to all that each of you do to ensure our district mission statement, strategic plan, and core values are not just carefully chosen words on a piece of paper, but a lived experience for the entire SLP learning community. We have something incredibly special here, and is a byproduct of collaboration and conversations with everyone in St. Louis Park. I say this as a parent of an SLP first grader, a passionate educator, and a Park Association of Teachers leader. Last week, I connected with a student who was at the superintendent's advisory committee, and nine years ago was learning with me in a third-grade classroom. He said, "Mr. Tangen, the work of this district is so incredible, and I believe we are the only district doing this work." After that statement, my spirit cannot have been any more enhanced or energized, and I want to thank everyone in this room and the community for fostering this experience and environment for our learners. This experience helped push me into action as I move into my second item. I've invited our wonderfully talented early childhood and ABE educators here tonight to use open forum to share their perspectives and their voice. This group of talented educators provide a rich learning environment for families who are just starting their SLP learning experience and for adult learners. Their work is crucial to developing strategy three within our strategic plan, and their community relationships can help with our core value, with our commitment to enhance the healthy development of each learner by engaging and supporting families and communities. This group of educators and I are licensed teachers. However, they are not fully recognized within our contract. And I'm thankful that our district leaders have moved from saying that we are a K-12 district to an E-12, and I invite this group to consider if we need to consider moving it from early childhood through adult learners. So, it's with great pleasure that I invite our ECFE and ABE teachers here tonight, and I invite our community to hear and share their learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. And are the, are you Jeannie?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, first I have to commend the handwriting that I can read. There are some open forms, it's a struggle. And I forgot to mention, if you haven't done this before, there's a three-minute time limit, and that's being, you're getting a, Julia's trying to give you a clue. And if it's, so she'll flip through that, and I don't know, it'll all work out. So, Jeannie Raditz.
Okay, thank you. So, greetings Superintendent Ossai, Board Chair Gores, and school board members. My name is Jeannie Raditz, and my address is 4208 Drew Avenue in Minneapolis. Thank you for your time this evening, so I may share who we are in ABE. We offer both adult basic education and English as a second language classes. We serve students from age seventeen to people well in their eighties. We ser, excuse me, we serve people born in the United States and people from over fifty different countries. Excuse me. The adults who come through our doors have widely varying backgrounds and needs. Some who didn't have a chance to complete a high school diploma are now carving out the time to pursue a GED. For many, this is a completion of a lifelong dream. For others, it's a chance to be a role model for their children. Other students already have a diploma or even a college degree, but they need more English or math skills. But as adults, they have jobs, they have kids. In fact, the 209 students we served last year had 204 children among them, ages birth through 12th grade. These parents want skills they need to help their children with homework and to navigate the school system. Excuse me. In addition, we offer citizenship preparation, computer skills, and job training classes. The three of us, Steve, Elizabeth, and myself, are all licensed teachers with a combined seventy-eight years of service to the adult, excuse me, St. Louis Park ABE program. We are trained in and required to give state-mandated standardized tests. We teach according to college and career readiness standards, which are aligned with K-12's common core. We regularly differentiate our instruction, as each student who attends has different strengths and weaknesses. We are involved in ongoing racial equity training. Courageous conversations about race and culturally relevant pedagogy are crucial to us as we work with multiple ethnicities every day. We will continue to provide quality educational opportunities that align with our district's mission and strategic plan. We thank you for your support of our program and as students we serve, and I'm sorry for my cold. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Je. So, next I have Cynthia Peterson.
Hello, Chairperson Gores, Superintendent Ossai, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Cynthia Peterson. I reside at 5701 West Glenmore Road in Minnetoka. I am a teacher who is licensed by the state of Minnesota, and this is my seventeenth year working in the St. Louis Park School District. I wanted to give you an idea tonight of the critical role that our early childhood family education teachers play in this school district. I love my work as a parent educator here in St. Louis Park. I teach several weekly ECFE classes along with doing outreach. One of the outreach jobs that I do is to ensure that all families in St. Louis Park with children ages birth to five have an opportunity to attend our early childhood programs, including and especially our Black, Brown, and Indigenous families. This is done by seeking out families and creating relationships with them. I do this through maintaining relationships with our community partners, attending community events like Community Link, National Night Out, Summer in the Park, working with our cultural liaisons, attending events at the elementary schools, connecting families to services when they come to early childhood screening, performing home visits with all of our four-year-olds who attend early learning with a scholarship, and most recently, tracking younger siblings of children currently in our programs or that I meet in the community in order to help them register for our programs. Thank goodness for Google Docs. Families are then able to register for programming directly through me if they need help doing that. I am also pretty well-known in the Somali community now in St. Louis Park, so families often call me when they or their neighbors have children who are ready for early childhood programs. As early childhood teachers, I take my commitment to preparing our youngest learners and their families for success in school very seriously. I am passionate about this work, and I choose this work.
Thank you. So, next up, we have Erica Scott.
Good evening, Chairperson Gores, Superintendent Ossai, and the board members. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Erica Scott. I reside at 3940 Ottawa Avenue South in St. Louis Park. I am a proud early learning preschool teacher. I am also the proud parent of a fifth grader at Susan Langren and a seventh grader at the middle school. I hold a Minnesota State Teaching License, and I've been teaching in the St. Louis Park Schools for six years. I've been a licensed teacher for twenty-two years. I teach four- and five-year-olds. I teach a morning and an afternoon class and have thirty-two bright and curious students, sixteen in each class. The early learning preschool is a fully integrated inclusive model, and my students represent a diverse community of learners. I teach typically developing students, ELL students, students who are on scholarship, and students who receive special education services. Our classroom makeup mirrors what you would find in any elementary classroom in St. Louis Park. I work closely and plan and co-teach with special education teachers. I also work with other special education support staff, including speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, and autism and behavior support staff. Our curriculum and assessments are approved by the Minnesota Department of Education. We are a four-star parent-aware rated preschool. That's the highest rating. We regularly review the data we collect through the variety of assessments that we administer to inform our practice. Additionally, we work with the kindergarten teachers across the district to ensure that the transition from pre-K to K goes smoothly. We follow the big day for pre-K curriculum with a focus on literacy and mathematics, a handwriting without tears program, and we follow the second step, social-emotional curriculum, that teaches kids how to manage their emotions, behavior, problem solve, advocate for themselves, and how to be responsible and respectful members of our classroom community. We follow a scope and sequence that targets specific math and literacy objectives each week, and we build learning opportunities through daily, engaging, creative, and hands-on projects. Parent-teacher conferences are held in the fall and the spring, and I'm proud of the partnerships I've established with the parents in my classroom, as I have the opportunity to interact with them on a daily basis. There is never a dull moment in Room 204, and I wouldn't have it any other way. It is a privilege to teach these thirty-two sweet and inquisitive children. I know that their future is bright as they begin their educational career in the St. Louis Park School District, a district that distinguishes itself with a commitment to rigor, equity, and achieving success one student at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. And next up, we have Kim Rochaunt.
Good evening, Chairperson Gores, Superintendent Ossai, members of the school board, and our district leaders. My name is Kim Rosholdt. I live at 10747 Morgan Circle South in Bloomington, Minnesota. I'm currently a teacher on special assignment. I, it is in early childhood. It continues to be a privilege to learn and grow as a teacher for the last twenty-two years in St. Louis Park. My two sons attended our early childhood programs and graduated in this district. We stayed within this district for many reasons. One being our mission's core value of enhancing the healthy development of each learner by engaging and supporting families, and now we do that in an equitable way. So, creating connections with families is what I'm going to talk about today. We currently serve about eight hundred children, that's eight hundred families. So, connecting with those families is an integral part of our work in early childhood. Parents, of course, are the first and most important teacher in a child's life, but here in ECFE and preschool, there, we are often the family's first connection to the largest community school district. We make connections with families in many ways, like daily conversations, home visiting, family fun activities like the winter meltdown, conferences, daily emails or blogs, text messages, by inviting families to share their skills and their gifts within our classroom. We continue to connect with families and engage with families throughout their entire career in St. Louis Park, for me, which is often lifelong. For me personally, that means I get to see children in the halls who come up and remember me. It means I'm out at a community event and hear a parent say, "You were, you were my baby teacher. You taught me how to be a parent." Those are connections we value and we love as being teachers here in early childhood in St. Louis Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, we have Vanessa Hinton.
My name is Vanessa Hinton. I reside at 3521 36th Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Good evening, Chairperson Gores, Superintendent Ossai, and members of the board. As I said, my name is Vanessa Hinton. I've worked for, at Central Community Center for the last seven years, teaching ECFE and co-teaching early learning threes and fours with an early childhood special ed teacher. I am a teacher with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education and a license from the state of Minnesota in early childhood education. As early childhood teachers, we are a family's first experience to school in the St. Louis Park School District. Oftentimes, kids can be scared when they come into our building, and we get to show them how fun it is to come to school and learn. When observing our classroom, it may look like we're just having fun to the untrained eye, but we are always teaching. When you teach threes and fours, you are always embedding concepts in all that you do. As an early childhood teacher, I teach pre-academic skills, rules, routines, social skills, and self-regulation. These skills are foundational and vital for success in school and in life. My dad always said, "If you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life." I love what I get to do every day. I knew that by doing what I love and teaching preschool, that I wouldn't be compensated based on my worth in the eyes of others. I chose to be here because I love teaching and the impact my colleagues and I have on young kids and their families. I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe in our youngest learners' potentials. I have friends that will only consider teaching early childhood in districts that are fully represented on the teacher contract. If you want to attract diverse teachers to early learning, our pay needs to reflect that of our colleagues on the teacher contract. We are asking you to support early education and early childhood teachers as important and vital to the success of current and future students and families in St. Louis Park. We believe early learning is important work, but not everyone does, and we are asking you to change that perception. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, appreciate that. And next up, we have Jessica. Is it McKinley or McKinty?
McKinley.
McKinley. It was the reader, not the writer.
It's probably my handwriting. Good evening. My name is Jessica McKinley, and I live at 13175 Cardinal Creek Road in Eden Prairie. I am here tonight as an early childhood special education teacher, and I don't have a real formal speech prepared. I'm kind of just going off the cuff, so I apologize if I overstep my bounds. But my colleagues here in early learning and ABE have done a really great job of telling you what they do, and as you see and hear, they do what every other teacher does in this district. But I'm here tonight, more selfish reasons than that, to be honest. I'm here because I want to speak up for our families, our kids, but myself, as a teacher on the regular teacher contract in this district. In my situation, I'm the special education teacher that co-teaches with these lovely teachers who have already spoken. Unfortunately, someone who didn't speak tonight is no longer an early learning teacher, but she's here tonight, and we co-taught for many years together. We've been teaching for twenty-plus years, each of us. We both have master's degrees. We both take care of and teach and support all the children that come through our doors. The big difference is, I make double what she makes. She doesn't teach early learning anymore because she can't afford it. She still is in our district. She moved on to another position in administration, and we need administrators for sure. But we also need people on the front line who know what they're doing, and we need to value them and show them that we value them, because teachers are leaving, and it's not just my colleague Britt Albrecht that's left, but it's other teachers too. And our surrounding districts are moving towards a teacher contract. And I get it, my undergrad is in business. How I ended up in special ed, who knows? But I understand budget. I understand that it's a lot of money, and community ed has only afforded so much. Our district has only afforded so much. But what we need is just for you guys to hear us, that we need good teachers, we need licensed teachers, and we need to keep the staff that we have, as well as attract qualified teachers. So, if you could partner with us and help us figure this out, we would be so grateful and so happy, and so would all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Just from watching home, in open forum, we simply listen and we don't respond, so I want to thank you all for coming. I will respond and say we really appreciate what you do, and as folks can tell at home, we're about to enter the bargaining season. So, we have taken our first foray. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at open forum that hasn't filled out a yellow slip and wants to do that? Okay, that will conclude open forum. You are welcome to stay if you want. You are also welcome to go, because I understand your teaching tomorrow, and you may have other things to do. So, thank you. That was a shout-out to Tom Bravo, who we know just got back from a trip and made it in time for the meeting in his presentation tonight when his time comes. So, next up is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Ossai?
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of informational items connected to our district mission. And the first item that I would like to talk about is, well, today is Earth Day, but this is Earth Week, and Chair Gores, as you acknowledged, Tom Bravo coming back. What you'll see up on the left hand of this slide are all of our sites and the B3 benchmark rating connected to those sites. And I share this, this is an example of all of the great work that we're doing here in St. Louis Park Public Schools to improve our facilities and enhance the sustainability of our facilities. As you know, a couple of meetings ago, our facilities manager, Tom Bravo, shared about the work that we're doing to really contribute and do our part as it relates to climate action here in St. Louis Park, but in the, in the country and in the world. I also, being that this is Earth Week, wanted to share a couple of local events that are occurring. On Thursday of this week, we'll be, they'll be hosting the Fifth Annual SLP Earth Day Free Dinner and Community Visioning Event, but the piece that I have appreciated most about it, and I think Ken will be judging as well, is the Cooking Matters Tween Cook-Off Event. That'll be happening at that event, and I know Karen has been there as well, so that'll be this Thursday, April 21st, 4th, from So that'll be this Thursday, April 21st, 4th, starting at 5:30, and I think it goes till about 7:00. Another event that will be happening this week locally connected to Earth Week and all of the festivities here in St. Louis Park is a Climate Justice Art Show, which will actually be hosted at The Nest and is sponsored by our student organization Roots and Shoots. So I just share this as an example of the partnership that we have here from a city standpoint, district level, and different organizations in the community and student organizations to preserve this great planning. The next item that I would like to just briefly touch on is core planning. So last week, on Thursday, we had our opportunity to have our annual district core planning meeting. And I would just like to take a moment to thank all of the staff, students, community members, parents that participated in that day-long event. I know two board members participated, Anne Casey and Karen Waters. And I continue to be impressed by the commitment of our community to our district mission, our core values, and our strategic plan strategies. Last Thursday proved to be no different, as we had really spirited, deep and reflective conversation about the progress we've made so far on our 2015-2020 strategic plan and the next action that we'll have to take to continue to accelerate our students to the actualization of our district mission. And the last piece that I would like to just take a moment to share is that we recently hosted the National Bar Conference here in St. Louis Park two weeks ago. And I know Chair Gores had a chance to attend two full days of the conference, and I'm hoping we'll share a little bit about our experience during communications and transmittals. But, you know, St. Louis Park has, you know, been known as a place for innovation, and the bar conference was just a reflection of that. 20 years ago, here in St. Louis Park, building assets and reducing risk, this group was started here by Angie Jarabek and other teachers who were desirous of improving graduation rates and credit attainment for our students. And this national event hosted here in St. Louis Park brought in over 500 people from all around the country, and we engaged in conversation and discussion about what's required. I would say a couple of the highlights from that event was having an opportunity to hear from former Commissioner of Education Ernie Duncan. Our Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan came and spoke as well, both providing very inspiring messages. Unfortunately, we were supposed to be here at the high school on Thursday of that conference, and our last winter storm of the year came through and prevented us from being here. But, you know, thankfully, that's our last one for the year. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Ossai. So next up, we have our discussion items, and I will say more about the bar event in communications and transmittals, it was really inspiring. But discussion I have now is self-insurance, about going, the idea of going with self-insurance as part of our employee health benefits plan. And I know Rick Cryer and Patricia Magnuson presented on that last time. I think we'll just ask for a little summary orientation because it is on our action agenda, and then we can either highlight or ask questions as appropriate.
Chair Gores, members of the board, Superintendent Ossai. This is, what's up on the screen is the full-blown deck from last time. So we're, we'll pick a couple of slides, hit the highlights. Thank you for entertaining this again. We are coming back with a recommendation to approve a resolution to move to self-insurance for our employee benefit plan. And we just wanted to, oh, okay, this was, wow, thank you, sir. So there are 34 other districts who have, in the last 10 years, gone to self-insurance as opposed to buying insurance, I would say, full retail price from one of our local carriers, Health Partners, Blue Cross, Medica, Preferred One, or other carriers. In going to self-insured, you kind of, in some ways, cut out some of the middleman, reduce the profit, and hope, and the goal is to level out your premium so you don't have zero one year and 12% the other year, and then 8% and zero. So we're looking to have more level funding, which then creates better planning and the ability to budget for the costs, and it reduces pressure in negotiations. When there are spikes in the cost of premiums, it causes employees to pay a larger share of the contribution. And that is also a factor for our staff and their families. So we have seen premiums over the last six years, negative eight, positive 7%, positive 12%, positive 12%. And we're looking, at this point, we believe that we can get down into the low single digits as we move through the next, you know, number of years, assuming everything works out as planned. And that has been the history for the other 34 districts. As they moved to self-funding, they built reserves and were able to weather ups and downs, so. Patricia, do you have anything else?
I would just add that over time, if it's well-funded and properly funded upfront, which is what our plan is to do, to not take a really low premium rate in the beginning, that if we fund it well and thoughtfully, over time, not only will it reduce spikes and valleys, but it hopefully will save costs for our staff.
Can you talk about what changes our employees receive? Will the services kind of be the same, and how will it all be communicated to them?
Sure. As a benefit plan, you know, employees will still get a card, they'll still go to the doctor, they'll present their card. We will still have Plan A, Plan B, we will still have all of the same coverages that we've had up to this point. Really, the most of the changes are on the back office side that are, you know, more or less invisible to employees as to who's paying the claims and who's insuring the risk, and where are we buying the reinsurance to protect ourselves against large staff losses. The next question is about, and how will this be communicated? Assuming the board moves forward with the resolution tonight, tomorrow or Wednesday, we will be posting the schedule for open enrollment, and then we will have meetings with the carriers and our insurance broker in every building from May 6th through, I think, the 16th or 15th. And open forums and conversations and things posted on the website. So we believe that we'll have a, everybody will have the chance to understand the plan. Can you tell us, does this cost any extra money in terms of extra employees to process the claims, or anything like that? No, actually, and I left Patricia, but, you know, we've always had to pay our, we've always had to pay. You know, people go to the doctor, claims are processed, our, the insurance plan, whether it's Health Partners, or Preferred One, or Blue Cross, they'll still pay the claims. They will then turn around and submit an invoice to us, which will pay the cost of those claims on a weekly basis versus paying the premium cost on a monthly basis. So just setting up the payments weekly versus monthly.
So I'm really, Rick, we've been on, doing this for a while together, and what struck me the last time you presented was, in the past, the recommendation has been not to do this. But the world evolves, what we're capable of doing evolves, our learning evolves, our experience evolves. And what you're telling us now is that you're recommending that we do this, that the concerns we may have had before, you think are manageable. Is that right?
Chair Gores, yes. I would say, you know, 20 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, I felt that the health plans had all the information and we were just shooting in the dark. There is much more transparency in the claims processing data and the tools that are available to, you know, districts as our size and smaller, that just wasn't there before. You know, internet, online information makes it possible. And through the tools that Digital One has, they can take the same information that our carriers have, churn it against their analytics, and then bump back against the health plan, whether it's Health Partners or others, and say, "Yeah, no, I think you have too much fat here," or "I think you're padding your costs there." And it's really kind of, you know, impressive to see what we can see when we lift up the hood and look underneath now.
And I think you said last time, I think it's one digital that is a consulting advisor that has advised most, if not all, of these other districts that have made this shift have not gone back. And the key, I think, Patricia, you said, is that we set the premium right, and that we build up the initial reserve, and then that we do have some stop-loss reinsurance for catastrophic health claims, so that we are protecting our financial well-being. Is that, did I have it right?
Yep, that's exactly right. We could have, as this slide that Rick just showed, we could look at what some of the carriers are telling us, that our costs could decline by as much as 12%. That is not a smart move. So that's, if you've heard of companies or organizations that might have failed maybe in the early days of self-funding, they might have gone forward with something like this, not anticipating changes to employee health. But we would move forward with more like a 5% increase and try to hold at that constant rate for a period of time.
On the premium cost?
On the premium cost, that's right.
And I was struck, Rick, if you can put up the districts that have done this. As I was eyeballing that, what struck me is, Anoka's a very large district, but we have Hopkins, which is our neighbor, we have Richfield, which is, or has been in our conference, we have Spring Lake Park, which is similarly sized to us, and they are among the districts that have gone forward and made this change, found it to be successful, and stayed with it. And that's a helpful piece of information. So I thank you for putting that all together.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks. I think it comes up on our action agenda down the road. Next up is the construction update. Welcome, Tom Bravo.
Thank you. Chairs Gores, Superintendent Ossai, school board members, I'm here to ask you to approve the Phase Two, which is the fitness center addition at the high school. As you can see from the slide here, that the bids came in at $2,009,000 with using the fitness center renovation dollars, and of course, the mechanical deferred maintenance. We have enough money to start this project. I would like to tell you again that we have exceeded or met the SBE, Small Business Enterprise Women, WBE, and MBE percentages that we want to hit. The goal for most standards are 10%. We're at 11% here. All the other projects were at 15 and 20. We should be getting more, more, a little more than 11% here. We just don't have all the final numbers from the subcontractors. Also, I wanted to let you know that after this project, if you approve it, we are about over one-third of the projects of the referendum that we've started and will be completing by the end of this year, which is about between 30 and 35 million dollars. So we're moving ahead, and things are going real well for us so far. Crowe Anderson's been a great partner, Canean Group has done some fantastic designs, and you'll see by the end of the summer, of course, Cedar Manor Project that will be opening, and the other projects that we've done by the end of the school year, end of this year. Any questions?
So, Tom, is Crowe Anderson managing this as a general contractor, and these are the 20 subcontractors that we're approving, or how does the interrelate?
How it works is, they're kind of like my right arm extension. We hold the contracts for all the subcontractors, so it's like we bid it out. Because I'm the only person, we, they help us with putting the packets together, they help us with the minutes, they make sure that the coordination's done right. The biggest thing that I think they do is, as a contractor of a construction managers, they watch the site for us. They make sure the safety's done, they make sure that everything's done properly, they make sure that we meet the Minnesota State Regulatory Requirements, things like that. So they're a good right arm extension for what we do here.
And so the total, the total package is a little under 3 million, which is well within what we had hoped it would be, and it's with about 20 different subcontractors or contractors?
Correct.
Yeah, and I really want to commend the partnership because in terms of how quickly and responsive they are, I had to drop a kid off at the high school, they had just started putting the fencing up around the district office, but the plant wall was still open. And I sent you a little picture, and by the next two hours, yep, we got that on the list, it's covered, don't worry. Very impressive, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
This is an exciting project for me, because I've been in the sporting area for a long time, but also for the community as far as moving us outside of that small classroom as a weight room, which is really dangerous for all of our students and all of our athletes, to a much bigger place where they can spread out and actually compete. So I appreciate this, and it's well, well-designed, and I'm glad that you came underneath, so we can do some more stuff.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is the wellness update.
Good evening, Chair Gores, Superintendent Ossai, and members of the board. This update tonight, do we have any? Yeah. We used to have, it was called the School Nutrition Advisory Committee, that's been meeting for several years in the district. And we, our final meeting of the year this year, we took a review of Policy 533, which is our school district wellness policy. And the first thing that we're going to do is reconvene ourselves as the wellness committee when we reconvene in the fall. And we spent some time as a group, because they've been together for a while, there's some community members, there's some of our school nutrition staff, Superintendent Ossai is there, and myself. We spent some time digging through Policy 533 and talked about where should we spend our time next year to have the biggest impact on wellness and on this policy. And these areas that you see on this slide are the areas that surfaced from that conversation. So they are in the areas of elementary nutrition curriculum and physical education, in the area of wellness leadership, and you can see all of the sub-areas there as well. Promoting intentional secondary physical activity, it's a little easier to incorporate that in an elementary school day, and the thought is, how could we incorporate intentional activity in a secondary school day? Wellness promotion and education is the last area. And I couldn't promise that we would get to any or all of these areas in a first year of work together, but this is the consensus of that group in the items that are surfaced in our board policy, 533. These are the areas where we should spend our time. So what we'll be doing next is, in the coming days and weeks, we will be recruiting for members of that wellness committee. We hope to get several staff members, several members of the community, and from our food nutrition staff. And we'll convene ourselves in the fall and begin work on what changes we could incorporate in the area of student wellness to make improvements, particularly in these areas, but in keeping with the school board policy. Any questions?
Another statement. Yes, I sat on that board for the snack board for a couple of years, and unfortunately couldn't make that last meeting, I was getting a knee replaced. But this is great things that it looks like we're going to be doing in the future. And it's that three-legged stool that we tried, we talked about years ago, of getting the health, wellness, and mental all put into one group so that we can move our children forward instead of just as far as nutrition. So, great job.
Patricia, if anybody is interested in serving on the wellness committee, how, what should they do, who should they contact?
They can contact me via email, or they can give me a call. My information is on the district website.
Do you have any plans to have any student representation on this committee?
Yes, I think that is a very good idea. That was surfaced, I believe, by the members of the group. And having sat with some community, or with some students at our strategic planning meeting last week, it was reinforced for me how effective and important student voice is.
I agree. And I was at the middle school hearing speeches from sixth graders who were writing persuasive speeches for their writing class, and actually, a number of the, almost all of the speeches would have referenced one of these things. So the sleep and the start times, physical activity during middle school, during the middle school day, and then the nutrition piece. So I know they have a strong interest in it right now. So the time is now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, and I think it's probably still you, is the fiscal year 2020 capital-related budgets. Thanks, Patricia.
Good evening. The reason we're here tonight is, we want to be able to begin the purchasing or the bidding. The reason we're here tonight is we want to be able to begin the purchasing or the bidding for items that need to be here before the start of school, and that's particularly important for capital-related items. So generally, I would have school boards adopt preliminarily a capital budget at this time of the year so that we can begin making plans, and then the final budget, of course, would come to the board in June in much the same form. If there are any changes, we would let you know of those as we move along. Here's some thoughts around how the capital budgets and that puzzle piece is really important because we sometimes set the capital budget and forget that it's part of the larger picture, and that there are many parts of capital-related budgets. So I just, we laid out a document that we're going to start using as we move forward in capital, but I want to just wrap your head around what you're going to see in the document. Capital comes with many different sources. There's regular operating capital, which is established by an amount per student that increases with the age of buildings, and coincidentally, or incidentally, our average building age in St. Louis Park is 47 years. So as our buildings age, our funding goes up just a little bit, it's attached to building age. So that's how operating capital funding, depends on the number of students and the age of buildings. There's a lease levy in place, that's just a dollar for dollar, we're able to levy for instructional space, and that's part of the annual lease, and so that's part of what we see in a capital budget. Really, the board sets that levy the fall of the year prior, and then we make our payments, and you can see the line items on the next sheets. Then we have our capital projects levy, which is really our technology levy, which is voter-approved, and it's based on net tax capacity, and so for this past year, our voter-approved capital projects levy, it's 3.812 percent of net tax capacity. So it just generates a dollar amount, and then we spend our technology-related items against that funding as was approved by our community. And we are thinking about ways to use a fund balance that we have in our capital-related budget areas. Oh, first, I want to go back and mention that there is long-term facility maintenance, or LTFM, as well. That's not in tonight's items that I'm going to present to you. We're thinking about bringing forward a new way of thinking about how we fund long-term facility maintenance that might be a little more effective. So we'll be bringing that to you in May, I hope, so we can present that to you and see what your thoughts are. But as you know, that's our funding for deferred maintenance. So we'll be talking to you more about that, it's not here tonight. Then, in fund balance, we're thinking about being certain that we've set aside sufficient amounts for curriculum development. We've heard a lot about our plans for curriculum review and development in the coming years, and we want to be certain that we have sufficient funding set aside. In my experience, curriculum and curriculum development are the biggest portion of capital funding, and so that would not be unusual here. And then to set aside at least 10 percent of expenditures as a placeholder for now, and I'll show you how we're thinking about that. And then there's lots of types of capital expenditures. So you're going to see things that are annual, like technology, I can't think of the word that I'm digging for, licenses for technology, those can be spent out of capital, those dollar amounts will show up year over year. There's one-time purchases, like for instance, you will see that we have a capital request this year for a snowplow, a new snowplow because it's aged out of its useful life. There'll be allocations you'll see in operating capital. So when principals can't quite know for certain what their capital expenditures will be in the coming year, what's going to break, what's going to come up, we set aside an allocation, and I'll talk to you about that. It doesn't mean that they have to spend it, but in case something comes up, we've allocated something. And then there are items on here that will require future board action. So if they've been approved tonight, that doesn't mean we don't have to come back to the board if something requires a bid, for instance, and I'll talk to you about some of those items on the next sheet as well. So that's sort of what you're going to see. Now, this is really small, but I want you to see, I think everything on here is really important, of course, because I'm a numbers person, but I want you to see what's going across the page and what you're seeing going down the page to give you a big picture here. So going across the page, the first column, of course, is descriptions, but the first column of numbers is really the budget year we're talking about for operating capital, so fiscal year 2020. And then there's several columns, there's four columns that are grayed out, and those are just estimates so that you can get a picture of what could happen in the coming years with this fund balance. And I'll talk to you more detailed about that. Then the last two columns are, again, budgets we're talking about for fiscal year 2020, the lease levy, and then our technology levy, the capital projects levy. So those are the columns going across. And then as you go down the side, the first group of numbers are fund balances, then we're going to add some revenue, and then talk about all of the requests for expenditures that go all the way down to the next page, and then look at what an ending fund balance could be. And as you move along the bottom, that red dollar amount at the very bottom shows with this proposal and thinking about the next several years, this is how that fund balance will shift for operating capital. And I think it's an important thing to be spending down that fund balance and not holding it. We should be spending our annual funding for the students that are in our classrooms today unless we have some thought about what we might be doing in the future. So this is our best estimate today for five years out for operating capital. So I'm just going to show you a few things on here. So if you start at the very top, left-hand corner, there's $3.6 million that we think we will have in operating capital at the end of this fiscal year. That's what will be sitting in fund balance. So our thinking is to set aside $1.5 million for future curriculum purchases beginning next year as we begin to develop curriculum, to make sure that we have that available to us. And then set aside another 10 percent, which leaves us with $1.938 million available just from fund balance if we thought we would completely spend down fund balance. Then we start adding back revenues. So you can see there's, if you add up those four line items, there's $1.234 million in revenue. That's next year's revenue that we will be getting for operating capital. That's your building age and per-student formula that's split between age and levy. So that gives us funds available of $3.172 million. So then I just want you to just draw your eye all the way down to the bottom of expenditures, and you see a number of $1.718 million. That's what we're proposing to spend, which is 1.4 million below what's available. So it's not a proposal to spend all the funding available, obviously, but to be prudent over time about how we might use the funding. So I'm just going to jump back up that column and point out a few areas. So if you look at the first several, okay, so the way this is sorted is by department and by site. We could have sorted it in lots of different ways, maybe by the, is it an annual item? Is it a one-time purchase? But for today, we've got it sorted by department. So if you look at the first several items, under assessment, evaluation, and research, and under business services, those are all annual items. Those are what it costs us to have Skyward Finance and Human Resources system. Those are the standardized tests that we implement with our students. So you can see all of those line items. And then the next line item under communications is a set aside for signage and branding for new construction. We don't know yet what that dollar amount will be, but we've set aside some funding, thinking about as our buildings open in the next several years, to be sure we have proper signage and branding in place. We've just started that conversation. So that's an example of a one-time expense. The next line item for the textbook and curriculum cycle, you could think about that as an allocation. So we're allocating $250,000 over the next several years. Patrick and I were just talking about perhaps amending that because we have a little better information for next year, but something along those lines, we would allocate for textbook purchases in advance every year. So that gives you an idea of those line items, and I can talk with you about any of these, but then just dump down to the next big category that says school slash principal. What we did was figure out an amount per student that made sense compared to what the buildings had received in capital funding in previous years. So then we applied $45 per student for allocations for elementary schools, and $70 and $62 per student for the secondary schools. It's a starting point, we can see over time if that holds and continues to make sense. So those would be allocations for principals to use, doesn't mean they have to spend it, but it's there for them if they need it. And then there's a few line items that are one-time. You'll see three sound systems for gymnasiums and cafeterias. It was the number-one item when I met with budget managers that the principals requested in their buildings for big meetings that they have with parents and community members and with students, to be sure that they are professional and effective in communicating with our families and children. So those are one-time items. Peter Hobart happens to have that sound system being installed already, so there's three other elementary schools. The next section is for athletics at the schools, at the secondary schools. In this first year, we got information from the department about which uniforms they'd want to replace, and then we established an allocation for future years so they can plan properly. Again, it doesn't mean that they have to spend all of that, but that we know there's funding set aside if that's what we want to do as we approach each of these years. And then the last is a set aside for facilities. We know we have deferred maintenance funding, and we know we have this building construction, but we also have day-to-day engines that break and all kinds of machinery and equipment and air handling systems that need repair and you name it, the kinds of repairs and changes that the facility staff is asked to take care of in our buildings without an allocation. So we did some research and found that $1.80 per square foot is about what a building should be allocated, but what we have done here to get us started is 25 cents per square foot, and I think it's a fair amount. We do have deferred maintenance funding that we're catching up with, and I think as we move in tandem with those two items, this 25 cents a square foot gives them a budget to draw from. Again, over time, we might want to adjust that, but that's where we're starting from today. So that gives you the operating capital balance, and then we draw those forward as you see. Lease levy will balance to zero, we should probably end next year with a fund balance, but that's only because we have to return the lease levy for ties that we levied last year, so we'll see that return come up in the next levy. So we'll end the year with a little balance under lease levy. And the last is the capital projects levy for technology, and you can see the capital items on the far right-hand corner that are being thought through, and as you know, a lot of the capital projects levy for technology, as it is in most districts, is paid, covers personnel, salary, and benefits. So there's a large line item there, as well as lease payments for some equipment, replacement computers, some infrastructure spending, you can see all the line items there. We plan to continue to hold a fund balance in the capital projects levy for future use as well, about $587,000. So this is how we're beginning to plan the capital budget, and action you take tonight will help us to begin to start to source things like snowplows and servers and things that we need to make sure that we have in place.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes, that's, yeah. That's a 10 percent set aside, so what I was trying to model out there is if we would hold back at least 10 percent of expenditures in a fund balance, it would be $248,000. We're holding about twice that in this model for fiscal year 2020. So those first several lines model out how much we would want to spend out of the fund balance if we only kept 10 percent of reserves, but obviously, we're spending less than that.
So it's not related to the tech levy?
It is. So if we start from the top, $587,000 is the balance we have of unspent funds from the tech levy, because we want to hold back funds for lots of reasons, unexpected costs, personnel costs that might rise over time. So we start from that, and then we said, what if we made sure to hold back at least 10 percent of that? That means of that cash sitting in fund balance, we could spend $338,000 of our fund balance and still be fine. Then we add next year's levy of 2.4 million, which tells us that we have $2.8 million of funds available while holding back that 10 percent. But we are only spending $2.4 million, so we've exceeded our goal of holding back 10 percent. There might be a better way to model that out, but...
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that I don't really have any questions because you did a fantastic presentation, and I actually understand this really well. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks, Patricia. Get out of that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, Patricia, one of the best presentations I've heard on something like this. Go ahead, Jo.
We thought we caught her with a typo when it said School Dude annual fee, but it turns out School Dude is the...
Is a thing.
Is a thing. Is it actual maintenance software?
Yeah, it's a maintenance software. Many school districts, it's kind of the, it's a software that's used in many districts. We're contemplating, we're just in the exploration phase right now of moving over to School Dude for our work order system. It's called School Dude, yes. We currently have an...
I got you to say it twice, that was worth it, but thank you for the thorough, throughout. This is very helpful.
And isn't that nice to know that we're trying to catch you on a typo somewhere? That is our goal, just to find it somewhere.
Patricia, I did have a question. I know that our larger referendum that we went out for includes a real significant remake of the central building, and that's going to create a whole new, really amazing early childhood center that we've done fine, I think, for them, half of central, but once we get the PSI side redone, they're just going to have an amazing space by design that's more right-sized for the size of the early education people. What I've noticed in this operating budget is, or, that's what you called it, right? Capital, capital budget, capital. There's a Ready Investments Adult Basic Education Building, and then if I follow it over, it looks like there's about $81,000 allocated for that, it's under the lease levy expenditures section.
Yep, so what...
Just wondering if you could explain what that is, because it's about the adult basic ed.
Yeah, so all of those are leases for space that we currently hold, so that the holder of that lease where ABE is housed is Ready Investments. So that's the lease payment for that year.
Thank you.
This is more just a statement, again, my athletic stuff is showing, and it's nice to see that they're allocating funds for new uniforms because they're so tired. The St. Louis Park home and away uniforms are so tired. So it's nice that you're going to do something for them. I wasn't quite following how the 30K each year works, but I imagine that's just something that you're putting in there for in case something happens.
Yes, it's about the amount of, if you total up all of this year's, it's about $30,000. So in talking to Andy, he thought that he could plan in that way for $30,000 a year. It's a placeholder for now, as we get closer to each year, we'll make it more precise.
And it's not all under football uniforms?
No, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, well done. Next up on the agenda is the policy development, first reading of policies. You might as well, maybe, why don't you stay there just a minute? Stay, stay, because we love listening to you, and I think you might have some things to say about this policy, right? So it's first reading of policies, 799 Post-Issuance Debt Compliance Policy, and then we'll move on to the 820 Closing of a School Building, but let's start with policy 799.
Chair Gores, members of the board, I was, earlier this morning at Cabinet, I apologized to Patricia because she was pretty much every agenda item, and she corrected me and said, well, that's how it's supposed to be. So I don't feel bad in asking her assistance in helping to explain policy 799.
So, policy 799 is about post-issuance compliance, and that just means after we issue debt, and all of our debt is, for the most part, tax-exempt debt. So what happens to make sure we are complying with IRS and SEC rules after we issue debt? So that's all post-issuance compliance means. Ellers and Associates, our financial advisor, actually wrote the existing post-issuance debt compliance policy and have recommended these changes. The SEC in February of this year... So it really controls how much money we're trying to make, the arbitrage we're trying to make off of interest. It also is how we use proceeds. Are we using the debt proceeds in the way that the board asked us to use them or our community asks us to use them in a bond issue that's voter-approved? And all of the continuing disclosure that you have to do around municipal bonds. It's not required to have a post-issuance compliance policy, but if you check the box on the reporting, it keeps us from being more likely to be audited. And so it's really important to have these in place. It also makes sure that Ellers and Associates and us in the business office know what to expect. And so there's a lot of details. It's more procedural, what's listed in this new policy, but it lays out the new rules that the SEC brought forward in February, and a lot of the rules that we want Ellers to follow when they do our compliance testing for us.
Patricia, I take it that the box is a compliance policy, not a compliance procedure?
Yes, that's right. Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if you should answer this question, Patricia Superintendent Osai. Is this something that MSBA should be reviewing as well?
There is not a model policy. MSBA does not have a model policy, and I think it's for the very reason it's not required to have a policy. I don't know why MSBA made a decision to not have one, but this idea has been around since about 2014.
Okay, great, thank you.
And as a board, yes, we generally follow MSBA protocol for policy, but we do have a few on the books that are tailor-made specifically to our district and how we operate in good faith and transparency with our community. So thank you so much for staying on top of the details, Patricia.
Patricia, thank you. I think we can handle the next one. Yeah. So next up is the second policy, which is closing of a school building. It's policy 820. I was amused that we adopted it May 27 of 2008, and that was, you know, probably just about the time and just before we were about to go through that whole community process that ended up with the closing of Cedar Manor. So we haven't had to use it since, but I have memories.
Well, I'm not normally a proofreader, but Roman numeral 2, 3, B, it says Manor is, I think he Manor in. And to be very, very, very picky, as well as at it, on the backside, the last number five, oh, towards the end of the policy, I should say, the last number five, D5, the paragraph starting Park School Board should be followed in addition to any regular means of notification, written notification of all schools, but under consideration of closing, just to be picky, no comma, shouldn't be a comma there.
Jim, why don't you, just after the meeting's over, step down, and we'll take a look right at it on here and give it to Aston so we follow what you were seeing, what you were saying. Okay? And then moving on, I assume there are any other? Okay, so moving on to the second reading of policy 801, equal access to school facilities. I'll just take that one first, and then we'll take the next one. That's the second reading, or any comments? All right, then moving on to 810, naming of facilities. Any comments or discussion for that one at this point? They will come up on our action agenda later. Now we're on the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would want to take off for discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
Just briefly, I just noticed on the agenda, we refer to the consent agenda as the meeting of March 25, 2019. Should we say, go on? 22nd, 2019? Where was that?
So our agenda...
On the agenda.
Yep, on the agenda itself, yeah. We'll just take that as a clerical correction. The following items for the school board meeting of April 22, 2019. And that's what we're discussing, what was included in the packet for that, this current meeting. Thank you, Joe. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for April 22, 2019?
So what?
Moved by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, 7-0. So now we're up to the action agenda. First item on the action agenda is self-insurance employee health benefits plan. I just want to find the resolution, because I believe that is coming to us with the need to do a formal resolution. Is that correct? So we, and the 27th School Board, we would waive the reading of the resolution, but do you need us to read this one because we're doing something kind of, no. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
No.
Moved by Mary, is there a second?
No.
Seconded by Ann, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 7-0. All right, so it is recommended in this resolution, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 283, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 471, 617, subdivision one, that the Board approves recommendation to self-insure the district's health benefit plan effective July 1, 2019. I did not read all the whereas's, simply the motion. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Is there any discussion? I think the points that I would have made, and I think we would have made, we made during the discussion earlier in the meeting, so I think times have changed, and this is, at least for me, the appropriate thing to do at this point in time. So the court will call, the rule call?
Director Casey?
Aye.
Director Tatalovich?
Aye.
Director Morrison?
Aye.
Director Gores?
Aye.
Director Tombach?
Aye.
Director Waters?
Aye.
Director Benneke?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Next on the action agenda is, it is recommended that the School Board approve the draft operating capital lease levy and capital projects levy technology budgets for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken, is there a second? Seconded by Ann, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie, 7-0. Next up, it is recommended that the School Board approve the second reading of policies 801, equal access to school facilities, and 810, naming of facilities. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Mary, is there a second?
No.
Seconded by Ann, any discussion? All in favors, Carrie's? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie, 7-0. So now we are up to communications and transmittals.
I have one. Superintendent Osai did point out today that on the 24th, actually Wednesday, the 24th, is when we'll be judging the cooking matters event at 5:30, where the, I did it last year, and it's where they bring in kids for six weeks or nine weeks, and they teach how to cook healthier choices. And this cumulates to the end of it, and they get to make some choices of foods that they enjoy, and then they get to make, convert those recipes into healthier choices. So like, if there's going to be a corn dog, instead of deep frying it, you want bacon or something of that nature. So we get to do that, and it's going to be a great event, and these kids are really, really interesting to watch them cook, so it's great.
I would like to plug the next Heart of the Matter Community Discussion sponsored by the Community Education Advisory Council. We're partnering with Friends of the Arts next Thursday, May 2, so a week from Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30 in the Rec Center banquet room, and the topic is Creativity in Community: A Conversation with Local Artists. The work of artists is all around us. Through their creative work, artists affect change in ways that invigorate local community, attract tourists, bridge cultural differences, improve public safety, and strengthen community identity and collective voice in ways both big and small art brings us together and strengthens communities. So we're going to have a panel discussion with four local artists who are connected to our St. Louis Park community, and kind of talk about what fuels their work, how they navigate their creative process, and how their artwork makes a difference in their community. So there's four artists, Dan Israel, Xiaoji Lu, Mari Harris, and Stacia Goodman. It is a free event. You can register on SLP Community Ed, or you can come on the day, Thursday, May 2, at 6:30 at the Rec Center banquet room.
So I was going to talk a little bit about BAR, the Building Assets Reducing Risks two-day conference that was held here in St. Louis Park. It was a national event with teachers and administrators from all over this country because the program that we began here in St. Louis Park has gone national. It is a program that essentially, it began, and its focus for BAR is ninth graders only, but at St. Louis Park, we've expanded it to include 10th graders, and the concept is same teachers, same students, so that relationships can be built, and so that if students are having issues, they can be identified sooner rather than later, and an early intervention can hopefully turn things around. In a short version, if you had 150 students, you'd split them up in thirty classes of 30, and they'd have the same core teachers, so social studies, science, math, they'd all have the same teachers, and so those three teachers could meet and talk about their students and maybe see some patterns. That's not exactly how it works, but that's the concept that's behind how it works. And they also have a plan for once a week, and it rotates between those core subjects, what they call I-time, which we had some sample, samples of that to try, and it's really a wonderful structured lesson for building relationships, and it was really very powerful. And I hope that we're using it and using it the way it's intended, because it really sounds like it's a good way to get to know your students who don't come in pieces. So if we're, and the concept behind all of that is, we like to reduce the failure rate in ninth grade, because if you don't fail a class in ninth grade, your odds of graduating from high school are dramatically improved. And as Arnie Duncan told us, based on his experience in Chicago, if you don't graduate from high school and you are a child at risk, you have a much higher likelihood, particularly if you're a black or brown child, of being shot in Chicago. And so there's some whole life ramifications for getting it right in the high schools, and so I'm really glad that we are working really hard at it. It was kind of old home week, because we've lost a lot of our excellent teachers to this program as they've gone national, trying to make a broader difference. But Peggy Flanagan is a graduate of ours, and she, of course, is now the lieutenant governor. Four years ago, she was director of Children's Defense Fund. So what a four-year difference that can make. And she, Bob Laney is now retired. He used to be a principal of St. Louis Park, but he is now working with BAR, as is former superintendent Rob Metz, as is the leaders of it, Angie Jeravec and Justin Barbo. So it's got quite a bunch of our folks. But Peggy was up there, and she did, as she always does, some wonderful shout-outs to St. Louis Park and to the education she received here, and to the fact that people believed in her when she didn't believe in herself. And the people were the counselors and the teachers, and what a difference it made in her life. And she looked across the room, and she said, "I can't call you Bob. It's always going to be Mr. Laney." And it was just said with such affection, because, you know, people had some growing to do when they were in high school, and she was not the only student that needs to, you know, be believed in and have some growth. She also is a parent of one of our students that's at Peter Hobart, and so she gave a shout-out to Principal Carrie Schweetering. Did I get that right? Yep, who was there and who also is doing such a wonderful job at Peter Hobart for all the students there. And it was sort of nice to have that kind of national recognition of the good work that we're doing here. There was a video that was shown, I'm just going to highlight it for you and then invite everybody if they're interested to go Google it, because you can find it on YouTube's, actually YouTube it. And it's Mo Cheeks, M-O, it's the first name, Cheeks is the last name, and it is from about, and he is, there's a young girl who is maybe 14, and she's going to sing the Star Spangled Banner at an event. Have you seen it, Patrick? Yes. And she's got a great voice, and she suddenly panics and can't remember the words, and is just totally embarrassed beyond belief. And the video is really about how you can stand with a young person and help them do their best, because he's the coach of one of the basketball teams. He's way across the room when she starts to flounder, and he walks all the way across the room, stands right next to her, puts his arm around her, and starts to feed the words to her, and she still can't quite get back on track. So he starts to sing with her, and then he's got the crowd, and everybody there is singing with her, and she finds herself again, and she does a spectacular job. So what could have been a long-time, you know, haunting memory was saved by somebody who knew how to stand with the young person who's struggling. And I think it's a great example to all of us, as we all try to do just that. So it was a great experience. If you have a chance to do a BAR conference, recommend it. The last thing I want to do is, I've been on the board a long time. I, and I just dropped mine, so I'll hold yours. I've had a lot of people say thank you in emails and say thank you personally to the hard work that we do, but I got to tell you, we all got a personal thank-you note from a member of our community for the work that we did and the decision that we made with school start times. And I'm very grateful for the support from the community, but in particular for this person who, I always have a good intention, but I never get it executed, so thank you. Is there a motion to a Zern?
No.
Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.